Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everybody could stand and do the flag salute. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight. We'll go over the participants online first. I see there's Barry Byler, he's obviously staff. Ed, yes, would that be?
Ed Glenn.
Ed Glenn. Jackie McCauley is here. Junior Drago, he's city council online. And it looks like we got Tori Griggs with the boardman chamber. Welcome, welcome, everybody. Did I get everybody that's on there? Okay, and we'll do the roll call for the council.
Ed Glenn, here.
Paul Beal.
Here.
Katie, here. Isaac.
Here.
Brenda, here. Call keeper.
Here.
Can you all hear me? Oh, I'm sorry, Junior, I'm sorry.
Here. Here.
Thank you.
And you got the, our two guests.
They, they saw him.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would ask that if you would consider a change to the agenda under pre-arranged presentations to allow our two guests here to talk a little bit to the council about our narcotics team. And then I would introduce those individuals at that time.
At that time, perfect. We'll put them at the pre-arranged presentation. So we're done with our roll call, and we don't have any excused absences. Let's go ahead and talk about the minutes of December 8. You should all have those in front of you.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes from December 8 as written and presented.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so December 8, minutes are passed. Let's take a look at January 5, 2021, regular meeting.
I'd like to move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second, please.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Already, we're gonna do introductions with the later. Let's talk about the financial report.
I think before the last council, we used to, I know I had several comments and not exciting today about, well, I didn't get my packet and I kept getting pieces of that. But you have to understand that when we hardly, we rarely get our bank statement by the second day of the month. And today is the second day of February, and we hurried and got January's done. So I guess I, I guess you have to be some patient with, with the staff. If you, sometimes last year, they would move the meeting. And that makes it hard for everybody because they know that our city council meetings are gonna be the first Tuesday of the month. But we'll send out the basic parts of what we have, you know, but you're gonna get extra things at the last minute for trying to meet such an early deadline in the month. Anyway, that being said.
Mayor, just a second.
Yes.
What's saying we can't have the meeting on the second Tuesday of the month? To give your financial team an opportunity to like pay the bills and get the report ready so that when we get the package, it's already out done?
In the charter, it says Tuesday. So we just, we just have to, I mean, you can say, like if you, what's March? Okay, March is gonna be the same thing. The second is gonna be the first.
Does anybody stipulate in our charter that we have to meet?
Yes.
Now, can we as a board override that?
No. You could change the council rules, you cannot change the charter.
Are you just trying to?
I mean, you, yes, and I agree. And so what they did before is they would just say, well, let's just, and you can do, you can move the meeting, but you can't move it permanently.
Oh, okay then.
So you can say, well, let's, let's have March's meeting on the 9. And then you look at the calendar and you go, oh gosh, that's Easter or something, you know, but it's not, but anyway. Yeah, but you can do that.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, when it comes up that it's like two days before we have a meeting, I would like to, you know, consider moving it so that your financial people aren't under the gun to get it done and presented to us and get us counselors and people that have business with the city get it at last minute and maybe don't get it until they get here.
And, and to look at. See, in April is the 6th, the first Tuesday.
Right, and that's a good one.
Yeah, and so that's, yeah, anyway. Boy, what an excuse maker I am. Anyway, I think the, it's just the building fund, if you look down about to 260, they had a banner month again this last month, taking in a hundred thousand of revenue. But and I think, you know, we're getting room tax and those kind of things in, in this quarter. So things are looking good financially.
Does anybody have any questions about the financials? Okay, so having here, we had a discussion on Saturday about approving the financials and not. And I researched some of this and found out that if we don't have an audited report, we should not be approving our financials unless there is an audited report. And so what we're gonna start doing is we're gonna get the financial report from the city. If we have any questions, we talk about it. And then what we're gonna do is this report will then be placed on file for review until an audit. So that's how we're gonna be doing it. There's no need to be doing approving financials because they're not final. We do not have, it's not audited. So it's not a complete financial, if that makes sense. So if, once we're done with talking about the financials and there's no questions, then we're just gonna move the financials to wait till they're audited. And once an audit report comes, then we will then approve the treasurer's report.
And when, when do we proceed to get an audited report?
We talked about that on Saturday. It's a hit and miss on when that comes. But when it comes, then we'll have a time to be able to do that. Usually, but I think we were talking about September, I think, was the latest.
They're, they're supposed to be filed with the state by the 31st of December. But our audit phone is the last two years have asked for an extension. And so they have not been filed yet.
So my question, Mr. Mayor, is how will this impact finances for the city if we don't approve it until we get an audited report?
It's kinda like any other thing. It's the best guess. I wouldn't say it's the best guess, but it's kinda like that. It's a report that is given to us by what we got and until it's an audit, we really should not be voting on it.
I think, I think what, I think what the issue here really is, is that we balance, the city, we balance all of our bank accounts. So we're comfortable when we bring these figures to you.
I understand that.
And, but I think if, if you're, when you approve them, you're approving that there has not been any errors or anything. And, you know, when the auditors come, they dig through everything. And sometimes you make journal entries at the end of the, at, at the end of the fiscal year. So I, I think the recommendation is, and I would think if we were going to, say I was going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, then that would take a motion from you and you would approve that. So you can keep track, that way you would, you know, have, be able to keep track of big expenditures. But this is mostly the everyday items.
Okay, I was just concerned that we're not gonna approve anything until we get an audited report. And I was just wondering what the impact that would be on, on the city's function.
I think you could say, I think you could say, if you felt like you, that, maybe you could make the motion that we have seen the, I don't think in-house would be the word we'd wanna use, but some word that maybe that the financial director had presented or something, something like that. So you know that we have looked at them internally, but that we've not deposited them yet.
The research that I looked at was from Michigan State University. It was talking about parliamentary procedure. And there is no parliamentary rule that states that we should vote on the treasurer's report until we get an audit. And they gave one, once a year. Once you get it, that's about what it is. And it was just an encouragement because, like Chief had stated before, if somebody was embezzling and we hadn't caught it, we could be in some deep trouble that way. And so there's some embezzlement and some other things to be able to, and audit catches. And then we have that to be able to do. That's the best, easiest way I was able to figure.
So what was the vehicle that Michigan State utilized to carry on?
Well, exactly what I said, stated. They suggested, and there's lots of ways, but they said that basically you just talk about the report. If there's no questions, then you place the report in review, waiting for the audit. So we haven't approved of it, but it's a balanced budget as ordered to what the staff tells us.
And we can, we can have expenditures and collections and, and not be open to litigation because there's a discrepancy there?
As far as?
Embezlement per capita, I don't think it's gonna happen. But if there's not a reckoning of money?
That's where they're, that's where they're balancing their budget, is what I get.
Okay. Well, and I'd like to interject here. If you notice at the bottom to your left-hand side, that it says, and it lists our bank accounts, and where we have the money. And that figure should agree with the figure that's over on your ending fund balance. And so that's put there for, partly for your comfort. But you know, we have looked at every, all of our, you know, all of our bank accounts and stuff, and the pool. Because, you know, the largest amount of our money is in the Oregon, in the Oregon government pool. That's where you keep, everybody keeps all their money. And we did list what the interest rate was that we're getting on those accounts, just so you can be depressed.
Well, granted, I didn't mean that.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's pathetic.
Yeah, no, my, my main concern is potential for litigation. You know, and if I can see that, you know, over on the left, it balances with, over on the right, the numbers, it doesn't, it doesn't match.
Right.
It's just that it's in review and we don't approve it until we get an audited report. But, you know, that between review and the audited report that we received, there is a period of time where if something could go wrong and we don't catch it, it's there. I just don't wanna see the city of Boardman or the financial committee being held liable or litiable.
And I don't think that, that happens. I just think that it's a way that we protect ourselves. It's, it's, because by not approving and waiting for the audit, it actually protects us better by doing it that way. It kind of seems a little odd, but if that's what it does, we don't approve a financial report that could actually be wrong. Is kinda how I take it.
Inadvertently.
Say what?
Inadvertently.
Inadvertently, exactly. So that's what we're gonna do. This report is now placed on file for review until an audit. Chief Stoco, our pre-arranged presentation with the BENT team.
Thank you very much. So with us tonight, I've asked Rick Jackson with the Pendleton Police Department and Sergeant Placido Lopez with Oregon State Police. They're the two BENT team sergeants. Sergeant Jackson is the team leader for the BENT team. The BENT team is our Blue Mountain Narcotics Supportant Team. I have presentations so you can see some of what they do. This is a very small portion of what they do. It's gonna take hopefully 20, no, we're, we're gonna do it as quick as possible. But yeah, try to get the information out.
But a timeline, I've got a stopwatch right here.
He's got a lot of good information because what I will tell you is on a regular basis, you won't hear any of this. We, we, the, the BENT team operates pretty quietly. They don't, we're looking for pats on the back. And a lot of the cases they were, we can't share that information with everybody because obviously it jeopardizes cases. So rather than me steal thunder, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Sergeant Jackson. I just need a second to see if I can bring up the PowerPoint without losing.
Sure, while, while he does that. My name is Rick Jackson, like, like the chief said. Placido Lopez is here. We're here at the chief's request. This, I'm, I'm not a PowerPoint type of guy. I usually move around, shake people's hands, high five. And I'm trying, I'm trying to do my best during COVID. Yes, I can do that. So I'm real, real comfortable with people asking questions and just like interrupting, like, hey, so talk to me more about this. And if the chief says, Rick, you're done, we'll leave. Or the council, if you guys are done, if there's something you wanna hear more about, please ask. This is, uh, this is our way of showing you the council. You've dedicated some funds to, you've made a commitment to a regional effort. And, and, and it's my goal or our goal to show that you're getting a return on your investment. You guys are, you guys are giving the chief a body to provide to us. I answer to the chief on a weekly basis. He's my boss. I work for Pendleton, he works for OSP, but we work for the board. So right now, I'm here working for him. Okay. Throwing some pictures, there's our, our raid van. We take this to search warrants and process evidence, search warrant scenes with it.
Are you gonna, are you gonna need your notes or?
No, no, I just, yeah, you have to click it, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry. Is it okay? All right, so BENT was founded in 83. It was founded by Pendleton Police Department and Oregon State Police. Back then, we worked low-level drug traffickers undercover in bars, working for, to hold people accountable that were, that were dealing low-level amounts of meth in 83, or meth code, heroin, whatever it was in 83. It was predominantly undercover operations with guys dressed with long hair, goatees, making a local impact, impact. Drug teams throughout the country, that's how they worked. Each little area was working in their own area. Good. So fast forward from 83 to present. We're a multi-agency drug task force made up of the FBI, state, county, city, law enforcement agencies. We have Pendleton, OSP, two from Pendleton PD, two from, three from OSP, Morrow County, Milk Tree Water, Humantilla Tribal, Hermiston, Boardman, FBI, DEA, and we're supported by our Humantilla County DA's offices as well as the United States Attorney's Office. I'll do my best not to read that way. Part of that, when I say the FBI, we, because you're HITEs, and I may get ahead of myself on these slides, but we are required to be, to have a federal full-time participant, which is the FBI of Pendleton, to provide the Portland office for your detectives. And everybody on this BENT team is cross-state identified as FBI agents with Title 18, Title 21 authorities. The reason that's important for us is because we live very close to Washington. We live close to the Humantilla Indian Reservation, to Lala Walla. So it is very common for us when working drug trafficking organizations to go across state lines. Why that's important for narcotic work, if I go back to 1983, they were working drug cases in Boardman, drug cases in Pendleton, drug cases in Milton. And no one was talking to each other because we're also secret. I wasn't, when I first started as a drug cop, boy, I wasn't talking to no one. I'm undercover, no one's gonna hear nothing about what I'm doing. Now, because of our federal funding and the fact that we are FBI-sponsored task force, we're required to share. So it's kinda like working together with, trying to work together with everybody in the United States for one common goal of taking out drug trafficking organizations. All right. Quite okay. Yeah, so this is the only organized multi-agency enforcement team in Eastern Oregon. There's, so you, you as a council should be proud of that. You're part of a, of the, the only organized team from Ontario. We have a Mather County, we have, we have Mather County working with Ada County across the border. We have a couple, couple teams that have started up and disbanded in Baker City, to Loud County. We have Lala Walla and Lala Walla County. They've expanded. And the, the, the closest team that we work with is Tri-City Metro, FBI on, Biden Framed Task Force, Yakima, Lynn, etc. So the reason I bring that up, our mission on BENT with the board's direction is to develop our police officers to come to the team. I, I personally started working drugs in 2002. And, and in 2002, for my first few years of narcotic work, it was all about working drugs. I wanted to buy drugs undercover and I wanted to just work drugs. I took over supervising the team in 2010. Sergeant Lopez here came on, I think, mid-team. And our mission, because of the board's direction, which I agree with, is to not only develop our young narcotics detectives as, as good narcotics detectives, but overall good investigators. So the reason I bring that up is it's common for us to help out your agency, all the agencies that are participating in the program with a variety of different brands. Our mission is narcotic work, but we help with other brands as well. Collaborate with that. Okay. Perfect. Rick, can you read up your, can I move up there? Take it. Perfect. I'm not gonna bother you.
Just don't pull gun.
All right. So let's talk a little bit about HITEs and what that means to you as a, as a council. In 2005, we were designated a HITE. The HITE stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. What that means is that ONDCP, the Office of National Drug Control Policy, back in Washington DC, says, hey, United States, we're gonna dedicate funds to certain areas in the country. The stats are up here, so I may be wrong. Yeah, there we go. There's 12 HITEs in Oregon and Idaho. I'm sorry. Four in Idaho. Yes, four in Idaho. Four in Idaho, those are counties that are designated HITEs. For, for BENT, we are a Humantilla County, Morrow County HITE. It's because Humantilla and, because of 395, 82, 84, that thoroughfare of, of highway, we received that designation. And frankly, because in 2005, we were dealing with an exorbitant amount of meth lab. I think everybody remembers, and probably everybody in here is mad about how, I know I, it stinks that I have to be, if I wanna get super fed, it's all behind the counters. The reason we did that, or legislation did that, was because of our drug, our meth lab problem here in Humantilla, Morrow County. So we became a HITE in 2005. What, we, we, our beginning budget in '05, I was a detective then, was in the $30,000 mark. Fast forward to 2021, our HITE budget is $150,000. What that, that money is, you all provide bodies for this team. Every agency participating does. They, they take care of the personnel costs. That money is to work drug trafficking organizations. So we're identifying organizations that are operating in your area, our area, Humantilla County, Morrow County. Work those organizations with the goal of dismantling their whole group and not just taking down, you know, one person on a undercover stand. I talked a little about supervision, I think I already said that. Myself and Lopez answer to a board, we answer to your chief. I talked about being co-megals. We have one office in Pendleton, one office in Hermiston. We, a requirement is that we are co-located and co-megals with the FBI. The FBI also helps us with that information share. So when we're calling all the other state and local teams and putting whatever we're doing into a, into a communication system, a program, that all the other drug teams can see, the FBI has been the same thing. So again, it's forcing, that's all with my story as a young cop, not wanting to tell anybody anything. Now, everybody working drugs, in theory, is looking for one common goal. I talked about being federally depredized. And our, our focus, our focus is here in Humantilla, Morrow County, however it is taken outside of the area. I guess we put some of this stuff in there, not to brag, but I, I guess to show the council that people recognize the BENT team from other agencies, ONDCP, ONEA, as a team that is, that is doing good things. And I think that's something that, that you guys can be proud of. A good picture of, of our, our initiative, or our Oregon Idaho HITE initiative. These are the counties that, that's big, or actually virtually every county wants to become a HITE because they get the federal money to help. It's just if they have the problem. So it's a, you can see our big artery here at 84, it's 82, 395. And obviously, we don't have Washington up there, but you know how close we are to Washington. They have their, they have a separate HITE that we're required to talk to, to talk to there and review. Okay? Again, I'm talking about jurisdictional lines here, how, of. I guess something that you all should know is Sergeant Lopez and I continuously evaluate, literally on a weekly basis, balancing drug trafficking organizational work with local impact cases. They're the same thing. So if we take something, a drug trafficking organization off, it's gonna have a local impact. However, it's not lost upon us that sometimes there's, there's cases that our bosses, the chiefs and sheriffs of the board would like focus on, problem houses. So I put this in here to talk about the fact that it's a constant balance. We talk, we talk with the chiefs and sheriffs, if there's a problem in your community, we do our best to, to deal with that problem appropriately. Sometimes it takes longer because, well, actually, virtually all the time, if there's a problem house, we're about six tiers up from that. So the people dealing with that house are dealing with somebody who's dealing with somebody, and we're working that out. But in the end, it's gonna affect But in the end, it's gonna affect these people, but it's not lost upon us, but sometimes we need to, um, take a more immediate action on a, a problem area. We work that and do that. Um, so, so I guess, it's a good time to talk about it. Meth, uh, meth is number one, uh, we, we say meth is keen. Um, we, uh, the, our, our importation of crystal methamphetamine is off the charts. Um, I started working drugs, like I told you, in two thousand and two. We were paying for a pound of meth, let's say we seized a pound of meth in two thousand and two, twenty-seven thousand dollars. A pound of meth, a pound of meth now goes for twenty-five hundred? Twenty-five hundred dollars. So as you can see, um, ma'am, you're a numbered lady, you can see that.
There's a freebie.
Wait till I talk about it.
Well, oh, I thought you were gonna talk about, what's the new legislation?
Oh, Measure One Ten, yeah, I can talk about that too.
Sorry.
I will talk about that. Um, so you can see, just on that, there's a lot of drugs. Um, in my day, it was a really big deal, you got an eight pound. Now, the people that work for us are like, they're buying ounces. You know, we don't, it's not a big case unless you're seizing ten pounds. My day, it's a quarter pound, that was the day. So, uh, I got off topic. Uh, I talked about drug trafficking organizations, there's some stats here, if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so there's some stats we're talking about, our DTOs and MLAs, money laundering organizations and drug trafficking organizations. Uh, we have some interstate DTOs working, multi-state locals, and you can see the drugs that are tied to those drug trafficking organizations. Most of them are meth, a lot of them are poly-drug, which is more than one, uh, drug, and our, uh, our most, our drug that is on the incline the most would be fentanyl. So picture of crystal meth, so the patrol officers and the good, uh, men and women that are out there, uh, every day, uh, holding people accountable on the streets that are breaking into your cars and, and causing the problems for our communities are not seizing this, they're seizing, uh, dime bags, small bags of methamphetamine that people are using, or whatever drug it may be, um, and, 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 and is making them do, simple thing to do. So, our goal is to seize, uh, these are pound quantities of crystal meth, even most of the shards. Let's just say one of those shards right there, that's a wholesale, so that's straight from Mexico or, or supply country, and if you take one of those shards and break it up and, and cut it, that is, uh, four or five. You can times that by five pounds. I mean, they, they will cut drugs of that nature five times.
I don't really know what that means.
Yes, absolutely, perfect, first question, thank you.
I mean, I get you can cut something, you can add something.
Yes.
You know, like I heard they put batteries, dried batteries, they have to do it. Um, I mean, maybe that's old news, but.
So one of the things that they do cut the methamphetamine with is, in a sense, it's just a substance or like Jones and stuff like that, so then they'll mix it and, and, and still have a pure quantity of it, and, uh, like an ounce, and then they'll get two ounces of it, so they can sell it to more cops.
And, 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 you said sometime, we'd probably say virtually every time. If we're seizing drugs of that nature, that's coming over the border, stopping in a border town, and straight up to, to us. So, it's been cut in Mexico. By the time the, the guys in, on the streets are seizing it, it's been cut, when I say five times, maybe more than five pounds. So the potency, our drugs that are tested are ninety-five, ninety-eight percent pure, or if you take a dime bag off the streets, twenty-five, thirty percent pure. So you can see, it's been cut a few times, so if I deal something to him, and he deals it to her, she deals it to her, by the time it gets to you, they, they've made double their batch. Does that make sense?
So the potency goes down.
Absolutely. Uh, the case, we put this picture here, because this is a Morrow County case. I probably, I, I didn't put names, and, um, I'll show you pictures of, of the case. Not all of them are adjudicated, but this is, this is, find it. So this is the case that's taken right out of your area. Like I said, meth, fentanyl, heroin code, and script drugs. Script drugs know no boundaries, uh, really, fentanyl's getting to be that way as well. For script, there's, there's stats out there that say one in three people have used prescription drugs at some point. We, uh, on the streets, prior to fentanyl, or, or actually, we in the streets, we in the, there are task forces, if there was somebody dealing drugs at an, at an ounce level quantity of methamphetamine, they would have a number of different painkillers there as well, because people were buying, and know that it's just kinda great. Now that there's fentanyl, it's pretty much taking over everything. Smaller stuff, uh, we are seeing a, a rise, and I didn't put it in here, but LSD, we see, see some LSD, which is kinda neat. Uh, from back in the day, we used to seize it, but, uh, it's making a comeback. X, D, mushroom, spice, uh, all of the kinds of. It's a, uh, K two, with a, like a, it's a, it's a type of bath, bath salt. It's actually controlled now, they smoke it like, uh, cats, the cats.
Cats or?
With the new one.
Some of them are just synthesized.
Synthesized, legal thing to get you high.
So like?
Yes.
So like, um, people used to have?
Paint cans.
Cream, you put it on your pumpkin pot.
Yeah, yeah, whipped cream, still do.
Aerosol again.
Aerosol, yes. Paint cans, they, they still do. We don't deal with that, but people, uh, for sure, uh, on, on patrol, um, I can, the, the thing comes to my mind, Pendleton PD had a case the other day where the lady was hopping paint, and she was doing some crazy stuff, so, and she had a little motel room full of paint cans.
And what is fentanyl?
Fentanyl. Fentanyl, well, we're gonna get to that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a great slide for you. I, I can try to recycle, but, look at sheep.
Sure.
There are, uh, I think I talked about meth already, obviously, it's, uh, yeah, it's what it looks like, there's different names for meth. Uh, well, wait, so this meth up here, red pea dope. Uh, when Lopez and I were young, we worked these big, uh, uh, meth cases that had, we called it red pea dope. There was, it was a powdered form, made for pseudo-fed, um, it, red phosphorus. Now, you're, now it's virtually non-existent, and everybody that's seizing drugs is. In our picture, go ahead. So, this is a Morrow County case. I threw it in there because I wanted to show, I'll talk a little bit about a couple Morrow County cases that are adjudicated in the end, but I felt it's appropriate, so we're here in Morrow County, this is the drug we're taking out of your area. Uh, this is how meth is used. I, I can't, I can't ever not show this picture. This picture's been around for a while, but it really does just, just drive home what, what this does. And people say, and I'll probably hit this a few times, people say that drugs are a victimless crime, I've heard that before. Um, you know, oh, why are you working for dr- why are you working drugs, you know, it just hurts them. I'll talk about this later on, but in my experience, it hurts communities. Um, it, 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 drugs and/or, and alcohol in there, drugs and/or alcohol, you can trace back virtually every crime that, that our, our patrol officers are going to come back with something like this. And it, it hurts people. Uh, I threw this in there to show, this is a mid-level quantity, so when we're working drug cases in Morrow County, um, this is a common case for us, a quarter pound to a half pound, um, where, where people are buying their drugs from Tri-City, Yakima, Sunnyside, Spokane, and then of course, down south. This is a common quantity.
And, and, and I think, to touch on that, the key word there is common.
Yes.
It's not the, the dime bags, it's quarter pounds.
Quarter pound is common now, that is, and that, that's feeding a lot of, of users, and, and users are the ones that are breaking into your cars, your houses, and, and doing the crimes that, that we don't, that are affecting the livability of our communities. Cocaine, I'm gonna skip through this stuff, it's just a history of cocaine predators. Uh, another, another good case where we worked here, that was a, uh, a mid-level drug dealer. Usually have a gun, have some cash, and five ounces of coke. This is what we're trying to work, kilo quantities of, of drugs, two point two pounds. We'll, we'll, we'll skip the nomenclature, I guess, the history of, of how drugs are made. Fentanyl, okay. Uh, forty percent increase in deaths this year. I just talked today, as we're preparing for this, uh, presentation, um, I think that's a big stat for you guys to know. Forty percent increase of overdose deaths in, in here. Over eighty-one thousand deaths, uh, in the country tied back to overdose deaths, and that's taken from, uh, the medical examiner's site. So that means that, that that's legitimate, they brought the body in, they tested the blood, and it was an overdose death. That's a lot of deaths. Uh, fentanyl, the synthetic opioid, um, it was used, it is used as a pain relief, um, as, as an anesthetic, you asked what it was. Um, it's fifty times more potent than, uh, than morphine, or hundreds of times more potent than morphine. And fifty times more potent than heroin. Virtually all of our heroin addicts are using fentanyl, um, because of, it's fifty percent, fifty times more potent. Um, the, the, the fentanyl that we are seizing, or the fetis, are predominantly manufactured in Mexico. They are, uh, they're called M thirties, we're thirty, we're thirty, we're thirty. There's some history here, developed in fifty-nine, introduced in the sixties. Put this slide in here because it's a great analogy, so if you think about, I would, I just talked about all the, the overdoses. If you think about how you make your, and you, you mix up your cookie dough, and then you start sprinkling in your, your chocolate chips, um, that is the reason why there's so many fentanyl deaths. There's really, it's very difficult, they're not manufactured, and it's not like they're taking prescription off the company that we get when we have surgery, because a pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical company made that. This is manufactured in a shop somewhere in Mexico where they're mixing, they're dumping in white, pure fentanyl into binder, and they're mixing it up. So, I put this in here because it was described to me for, you never know if you're gonna get a big chocolate chip, my daughter loves this life. You're gonna get a big chocolate chip, you're gonna get no chocolate chips, or you're gonna get an even dose of chocolate chips. So that, that kind of explains why it's hard to control, um, overdoses. Currently, I, I, I talked to an analyst at, uh, Oregon Department of Justice today to try to give real-time stats for you guys. We're seeing, it's undetermined if we're gonna see a decline in overdoses. I know in our area, uh, back to August, there was an incline, August, September, October, November, we were having, our cops and our medics were going to overdoses every night. Right now, the, with the introduction of naloxone over the counter, which is a drug, or is a, uh, you know what that is?
A counteractin, because it's a counteractin.
Right. Right. Everybody can buy it. So, uh, they're giving it out to people that are, are drug addicts, so I, I mean, when we interview informants or do search warrants and talk to people, virtually all the people that use heroin and fentanyl have a dose of fentanyl on them. So I think that that's probably why we're seeing a little decline. All right, how much time do I got, Eric? Are we doing good?
Keep going.
They, they said keep going.
All right. I'll try, I'll speed up. So you see fentanyl seizure, I'll just go, I'll go real fast, it's on the rise. Fentanyl is, meth is keen, but fentanyl is coming, coming up. I'll tell you, uh, I'll tell you why, uh, fentanyl. Fentanyl, I can take a, a handful of fentanyl pills and put it in my pocket. I can, I can buy those fentanyl pills that say in, in Portland, let's go to Yakima. I can buy that many fentanyl pills, a thousand, worth three to five dollars a pill. I can drive to here and sell them for twenty dollars a pill. In graduate Pendleton, seventeen dollars a pill, Hermiston, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen dollars a pill, LaGrande, forty-five dollars a pill, Ontario, thirty dollars a pill. Now, here's a good thing, I couldn't look at you, because you're my way. So, here's a good thing, the dogs can't smell. And if I have one, a thousand pills, I can make more in a thousand pills than, than ten pounds of meth. Where am I gonna hide ten pounds of meth? I mean, ten pounds of meth, a pound of meth's that big. You can see where, where there's lots of money to be made, it's hard to bust people, the laws behind fentanyl are not as strong as they should be, yes or no?
Fentanyl's still being used for its original.
Yes. Pure fentanyl by, by anesthesiologists.
It's monitored, you're right.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Uh, this is, this is off the charts, like you said, you don't know what you're getting. Why, why is it, um, in comparison to other areas of Oregon, why are these drugs put a hot spot over here?
Well, I would say, and there, there is a slide later on that talks about all of Oregon, I would say, well, like it says right here, everywhere is going up. Um, everywhere is going up. We are experiencing the same as, as everyone else. Frankly, our seizures, I think we're at, uh, seventy-eight hundred fentanyl pills this year. Um, last year, we were at twenty, what did I say, I'm gonna, yeah, over, over twenty thousand, I wanna believe it was. There it is down there, twenty thousand dosage units for pills. Um, there's, there's, uh, I think, all of Oregon's over five hundred thousand, so, everywhere is experiencing this. All right. More fun slides that, uh, talk about. All right, keep going. This is, I already talked about this, medical examiner's report. Keep going. This is what fentanyl looks like, uh, M one thirties, or, or, uh, you said earlier, three dollar to twenty dollar market, conceivable, can't, uh, protect it, but. Off the top, let's get through all the prescription drug stuff, there's lots of prescription drugs out there, and, hold on a second. Uh, I, I talked about, about this earlier, victims of drug dealing and, and, and youth, children, parents, family, friends, landlords, victims, and that's what we're, we're really here talking to you guys about. You guys are representing, I talked to city councils, from, everybody that's involved in the, in the team, and your constituents or the people that you represent are worried about their houses being broken into, their cars being broken into, all, the, the, the street-level crime. I just, it's a pet peeve of mine when people say drugs are, are victimless crimes, because kids, and we've seen it on my entire career, communities are devastated by it. Uh, another picture from right here. That's all I'll say about that.
When you say right here, you mean in Bordenman?
I, I mean, in, I'll just say Morrow County, very close to Bordenman, yep. Let's get through all the drug paraphernalia. Get in the slide back to them there. Ooh, read that. Okay. Um, there's two cases here. I'll talk, this is a ca- this is a press release out of the United States Attorney's Office. What I'll say is that in the last, uh, this is public records for Jeremy Carroll, thirty-nine in Borden, Oregon, is arrested, gets sixty-three months of total prison. Um, and the next one we're gonna talk about, uh, that was, that, that was a press release, was, uh, the Morello case. Both of those were from, right out of here from Bordenman, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and, I'll just get to that next one. I don't know, I know I'm running out of time, uh, maybe I should've spent more time on this sheet, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead, please, because I think that's important, it's easier.
Sure, actu- absolutely. So, what, as you guys read this, I will tell you guys the benefit of, of the team working these type of cases in your area. These, these families, I mean, there's, that's what, we took down multiple people involved in this, and, uh, and, and several have been sentenced, obviously, several are still waiting to be sentenced, were connected throughout Oregon and California. Um, these, well, shoot, uh, all the way up to Ontario and Boise. These families, it took a while to get, get these folks, uh, with the fa- the fact that, that we are federally deputized, uh, we, the case officers in these cases, which was your detective, working for Bordenman Police Department, federally deputized, took these cases to the United States Attorney's Office, and, uh, and, and we obviously got a, a successful outcome. Um, we're, I can't remember the actual gun amount. Eight kilos of methamphetamine, again, a kilo is two point two pounds. Eleven. We got, we got ten more pounds later on, five more firearms. We seized forty-two packages of methamphetamine, we seized that down on the California border. It was coming here and a preemptive strike on the DTO. Another seventeen point six kilos of meth later on.
Twenty-nine firearms.
Where'd you see that at?
Right hand side.
There you go, twenty-nine firearms. And those firearms, the cool thing about that case, and, and we can go back to the other case, the Jeremy Carroll case, where all those, all those guns were being brought, sold here. I mean, I shouldn't say cool thing, but the good thing for you folks, been working this case, was we took these folks that were violent criminals and, and, and selling guns to other violent criminals out of your area. So that's, those are two cases to highlight that, I mean, I guess that's our job. We, we should be working those organizations to take the leaders of those organizations out. And, and those are the leaders of the organization.
Well, it hits home for me is we got three teachers in here who worked with the family. Who know the family, the
Well, I do.
I'm lost there.
I do too.
And so that really hits home. So, and, and other people who know that it's like, we're not immune.
Yes.
We're, just because we're small.
That, you're right, sir. I mean, you're right, you're not immune because you're small and, and actually, sometimes, I can speak to like Milton Tree Water. Same, same area, it's small, it's away from, it's right off the border between Wild Wall and Pendleton. Or, there's a lot of work to be done and, and I know that, again, I spent twenty years working on this team. Since we've had a Borden representative, we've been here honestly, just as much as we're in Hermiston. And so, I mean, that should, I guess that should be, show you folks that you're, I'm hoping shows you folks that you're getting your, your turn on here in fact, and so.
Well, I can testify that since we agreed to hire someone for the BENT team, that our number, our, our visibility of it on the local level, like just drive through jail and recognize which houses and so forth, is really high.
I, I'm glad to hear that. Actually, I'm very glad to hear that. Because again, the, the people that are, are doing those types of cases are usually involved in gangs, are usually involved in shootings, or usually, I mean, it's all tied together.
She's So I, I think we're, we're probably pretty close to being on time, but probably touch on Senate Bill 110. And what you believe, I know it's kind of questionable right now as to the fate of federal funding and especially where those, a lot of the drugs you just spoke about have been decriminalized in smaller amounts.
Correct.
How do you feel that's gonna affect the BENT team?
Personally, and I guess if I'm invited back, maybe someday I may eat my words here, but I don't think it's gonna affect us a lot. I'll tell you why. Our job is to work drug trafficking organizations. Our job is to work people that deal drugs. It's still illegal to deal drugs no matter how much. And frankly, although I'm not a fan of Senate Bill 110, and I don't think it's gonna do good things for our communities. We, the, the two to five grams, when we're working a case, we are, we are trying, we are trying to prove the elements of distribution, manufacture, and, and, and commercial delivery, all of which are still class A films. So I think that it's gonna slow us down a little bit because we get our information from people that have been arrested by patrol officers with those quantities. But as a whole, I guess maybe I'll eat my words, but I, I hope to see us continuing working at a level that's not affected by 110 right now.
I personally don't believe it's gonna affect those numbers. I, I believe that those DTOs are gonna continue to happen. And unfortunately, we have a very active, strong team that is praised by several other jurisdictions for the work they do. And so I'm very proud of what they do. They have made a big difference in Borden. You know, it's one position, but it's, I, I could not do what they do. I mean, for example, we, we use federal money to, to go buy dope. And some of that, you know, how much, how much, I mean, I mean, you're spending thousands of dollars.
Correct. Yeah, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollar budget this year. I have seventy thousand listed in Evers. So some of that's informant paying, but I would, I would say, quote me on this number because it could vary, but sixty to seventy thousand dollars is not outside of realm of possibility.
Well, and I guess I'd like to say that, you know, I've been in Borden forty years or so. And everybody knew we had a drug problem. But, you know, when you have at that time, maybe a three or a four man police force, there's no way that you're doing any growth, real growth. And so now that we can afford to have somebody dedicated to the BENT team, it has paid off. More goals than you can imagine in our community, having that one officer. To, more than one reason, because if you're part of the team, you know, you're part of the team and hey, team, come on over and help me out here.
You're absolutely right.
When you're not part of the team, you're going, you know, I'd love to help you, but I can't, I'm busy. I got this huge case over here and I'll get to you one of these days. And but like you say, by having a team and a team player, and to be honest, the caliber of the team player we had, we can't, we shouldn't neglect that. We had a really great BENT team member. So he, he would encourage, I mean, he could make things happen. And I think, like you say, I think we're a safer community. And, and like you say, you see those guys that we all knew that were raised here in our community and you think, you know, well, you didn't get the picture, you know, so.
Well, and, and, and what I can tell you is that we just don't, this team, their priority is dope drugs. But if we have a major crime, I, again, I can't, I don't have the staffing levels to work a, a major homicide or something. All I have to do is call or somebody and say, hey, I need some help. They send over experienced investigators to help with the crime scene and, and take care of those cases. And the one thing he briefly touched on at the very beginning was the experience that that detective gains for an agency for us. They're learning the first stages of becoming a supervisor because of all the stuff that they do. They manage cases, they manage teams, they manage a big operations. And so they're getting that experience so that when the next transition would be a supervisory position, because they've been there, they've done it, they understand how to do it. So I, I think these guys, both of them have been doing this a long time. You know, they're very supportive. I think the council for their willingness to invest in this program because I can tell you, this is a very small portion of what they do. They, they're very busy, they work wire cases every once in a while and, and those wire cases take years.
Yep.
What's a wire case?
A wire case is a Title III investigation, which authorizes us to listen to phones. Probably the one most intrusive thing you can do to a person, minus wire up a bedroom. I mean, people say a lot of things on their cell phones. So a Title III is saying, we have exhausted all means and we cannot get this person. But we know they're doing all this bad stuff. And we ask a federal judge to allow us to listen to their phone. And it really is probably the best way to take down an organization.
But, but that requires somebody twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
It requires, we have a twelve man team that we bring here at least once a week. And that twelve man team is working with about thirty other people, twenty-four seven, on a t- three, very exhausted.
Yeah, I'm coming to think about it, I can remember since I started working here, when I come to work and my back room was full of guys. And I haven't had that happen for four or five years.
Well, we didn't change that.
You, I'll tell you, you may have, but they were probably out of there because they like to work early in the morning. Very, very early, like three in the morning, so.
I could tell you. Ask me why and I'll tell you why we don't feel that way anymore.
Because you didn't want us all calling our neighbors.
No, I wish we could, but unfortunately, the laws have changed on how we serve search warrants. And frankly, it's, it's
You don't get to come to my office. All right. That's it.
So does anybody have any questions? And then we'll, sorry, we went way over what we probably thought we were gonna do, but I think it's important that you understand.
Like I said, we believe strongly in, we work for the chief. I, I, my parent agency is Pendleton, his parenting agency is Borden, Texas. We work for the board. So your detective that works for him, works for us, we work for him. So if there's something that you want touched on, if you, he has my cell phone number, if you have questions that I didn't answer here today, call. So whatever, whatever the boss says.
So you got a, a, a real hundred thousand foot view, but I, there's gonna be cases that we work, you're gonna hear all kinds of stuff. Don't ask, because if I don't tell you, I'm not gonna talk about it, so don't ask about them. If I can talk about it, we will bring out a press release or we'll, we'll, we'll give you what we can give you. You're gonna hear all kinds of rumors and stuff, but these guys, they, they can't work if they can't keep their information quiet. So I assure you that if you ask numbers and stuff, I can, I can give you that, but hey, I heard such and such got picked up. Well, I'm not gonna go down that road, so.
Perfect scenario, you never even know we're here and your crime goes down. Seriously, that's about the perfect scenario.
You had mentioned earlier that, that they carry the drugs in their pocket because the dogs can't smell it. Is, will that change?
I don't know. I mentioned that based on fentanyl. And I said on the box, it's a bit of an exaggeration, but they do carry in their pockets. They will take two thousand, two boats, two thousand, they're called a boat, there's a thousand, thousand fentanyl pills. Two boats of fentanyl down the freeway and you could walk any dog around in the country and it can't smell it. So that was an example, that, fentanyl is, is the exception. Most others will all wear drugs, the dogs and fentanyl.
But if, if, here, here's where we run into a problem now with the decriminalization. You've trained a dog to smell a specific drug. It can't tell you how much is there, it can tell you that that drug is there. And so even if it could smell fentanyl, you can have forty or sixty, forty fentanyl pills for personal use on your person. So really, the, the dog can't tell you if there's one or eight hundred. So that, that's kind of the problem that we're gonna face. A, a lot of canine units are having to be either retired or they really can't retrain them, that I'm aware of. So, you know, in, in a good canine program, that dog can probably, that initial investment costs you fifteen to twenty thousand. Gone.
That's all the way into state of work.
Yes, but that's where we are.
Thank you. Very helpful to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Go back to work and beat our creeps there.
Yes, sir, will do.
Thank you, Sergeant Jackson and Sergeant Lopez for coming. Again, thank you. We are at the part of our agenda for public comments. If they have public comments that they'd like to share.
Hi, guys.
Yeah, I was wondering if it would be Tori. Yep, Tori's got to share.
So tonight, I just wanna remind you that tomorrow morning and every Wednesday morning at seven thirty AM, you have a chance to join a Zoom meeting with Senator Hansel and Representative Bobby Levy in regards to what's happening at the session in Salem. They've had a lot of bills that's come at them, there's quite a few that are concerning bills. So you're welcome to join, ask questions. If you have questions for Representative Smith, you can email him to us at the chamber or you can email or call him directly in regards to those bills. The AARP Foundation is supplying their tax aid. Again, it's by appointment only. That's being held at the Porta Moro every Friday. You can find more information on our website for the phone call to directly call for that. And our lunch and learn series is the third session of our series on February, February twenty-seventh. And, and she'll be talking about five stages of stress, avoiding burnout. Kathy will go into detail on signs of lost productivity in the workplace, breaking down five levels and setting boundaries, negotiate priorities and develop personal balance. You can register that for that on our website as well. It's on our homepage on our banner. And February virtual luncheon is February seventeenth. That will be Kaylee Davis with Workforce Development will be joining me. We'll be discussing website resources, twenty twenty-one Career Connect event in April. And TEC and Forklift Simulator and the Columbia Works internship. And I will just be sharing general information to the community about what's happening around the area. Frostbite Scholarship Golf Tournament is scheduled March twenty-seventh. Registration will start at seven thirty, tee off time will start at eight thirty. We're accepting eighteen teams and we only have five spots left. The proceeds for this event will go towards the Chamber Scholarships to Riverside High School students. And the lunch and learn, sorry, with Kathy Height is actually February twenty-fifth at noon. We have, the awards banquet is set for March sixth, so you can join us by Zoom. And we'll be doing a chamber live link as well. Watch for updates as we finish planning that event. We're not quite finalized on that. And so it's kind of a work in progress there. On April twenty-eighth, save the date, is our Career Connect. It's a Yumato La Moro Regional Virtual Job Fair. That's partnership with Oregon State University, Porta Moro and the Borden Chamber. This used to be our job fair that was in March. We moved it to late April just due to changes in risk levels and trying to get it planned. And we're going to go complete virtual platform this year. So well, in the morning, we'll have students meeting with colleges and businesses around the area. In the afternoon, we'll be opened up to public, public, you'll have the opportunity to talk directly to industries that are hiring. And then also on our website, we've done some major updates here lately. And there are scholarships and grant opportunities out there across Moro County. We're pretty excited, we're trying, we're trying to create a list for students when they need to find scholarships and grants. And we have a list of them. We had a new one that came in. It's one from Independent Transport is starting one. And it is for a Riverside student and it's a five thousand dollar scholarship. And it has some pretty strict requirements to meet it, but that's a pretty exciting opportunity for one of our students. I just wanted to highlight, we've had a couple new members come in and a new member is Kat. And also, if you haven't heard, Pacific Ethanol switched over to Alto Columbia now. So that is what I have. If you guys have any questions for me?
Tori, do you have address to join the government meeting in the morning at seven thirty?
Yes, it's on our website. I have it on our, our event calendar and you can go on there for every Wednesday morning. There's a direct link to the website.
Okay.
And you can just click on it, open it up and have information there.
Okay. People need to know that, yeah.
Yeah. And they have a, quite a few lists of bills. And last time we spoke, last week, they were gonna come back with some more updated information and give us a little more detail where they're at. And it was kind of interesting to hear what committees they were part of. And they were excited to have as many, we had about thirty people on our call last time. So they're excited to hear our side of the views of the bills and take it back and do their work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tori.
Thank you, Tori.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any? Public comment that they would like to share?
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Mister Glenn.
Hello, Mister Mayor. Well, your discussion about your financial reports. Raised an issue that I've hauled a number of times in the past. And I have a solution for you. Your financial reports can be, your motion could be. Received, subject to subsequent audit. And that would then make it available to the public. Similarly, let me regrind an old act about the minutes. Minutes are prepared presumably soon after a meeting. But are not available to the public until sometime, sometimes two or three months after the meeting. They could be published in part of the packet. Marked draft, subject to council approval. Until, so that the public could see what happened at a previous meeting. On a different subject. It appears that you do have access. That could be used to provide. Public access to Hobo Pond for a child's or children's fishing pond. There's two streets in the West Urban Renewal Agency. That and touch national, the national for or national. Park property, in fact, include National Park property. So that you could conceivably with their approval. Build a trail from those streets on down to the pond. The third thing I'd like to ask. Is there any truth to a rumor I hear kicking around the neighborhood? About the port planning to construct a pipeline from Boardman to Ordness Depot for delivery of water. And if so, would that be city water? That would, might otherwise be needed in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Glenn. Appreciate the comments as far as, do you have anything to respond to that? Mister Ted Gru. As far as the Hobo Pond, I don't know anything about the Hobo Pond or the what he was talking about as far as the pipeline.
No, I don't know anything about the pipeline. I think that. The port has drilled a new big well and probably are going to build another one. So if we were selling water to the port, it would be more to replenish the, the. Facilities they're, they're already planning doing. And they, they're taking. Quite a lot less water now than they used to since they brought well five on, but. They said, don't get excited that they'll be eating our water again someday. And. Yeah, I don't know. And Hobo Pond. I, I guess we worked on that, let's say, probably twenty or thirty years ago. And. We could maybe relook at that again as a project. I know that we saved a set of docks from the arena down there so that we could, or they probably falling apart by now. I'm not sure.
I'm just curious about what the Hobo Pond does. Mister Glenn, I appreciate the comments as far as the, the verbiage for the audit. I will definitely take a look into that and. Be able to use better language as far as how we could do our. Our financial reports as related to the audit. So I appreciate that input. That will really help. Were there any other people who had some public comment that they'd like to share at this time? Having hearing none, we'll go to the action items. Do we have any action items? As far as ordinances, resolutions?
You do not. I, I'm thinking, I, we may have some and need to have a special meeting on the sixteenth. But I'll let you know. The bond people are getting ready to send us a, a resolution for the bond. And then I think also for the CRES three board will be needing to sign a, an IGA with them. So. But tonight, nobody. The process wasn't far enough along.
Correct. So are we looking, if, if that so happens, are we just looking for a meeting to approve some things?
Yes, I think it would be a pretty short meeting. We have to advertise it, of course. We do it on Zoom, but it, it wouldn't need to be. Unless there's things you want to discuss because. If, if you had the inclination, I watched part of the, you know, the League of Oregon Cities is always advertising for us to take part in that, particularly the new council training, that essential workshop or whatever they called it. And so I watched and a half an hour of it. Cause it must be, it's over an hour long, but I stopped at a half hour. But if we would, if you're willing to watch even say twenty minutes of it and do it in a couple, three segments, it would be a good. Use of your time, I think, because it does deal with what you can do about your charter, what your job, what your job as a council is compared to. Employees and those kind of things. So it's pretty informative. I could do, we could do. I think I'll put that on the agenda. If we have a short thing, that would be a good, you know, okay.
So. So I, I would probably encourage like be done at eight?
Yeah. Yes, because look how long we've been here. It's only seven twenty, isn't it? What time is it?
I suppose eight fifteen, but, but yeah.
I thought. So anyway, yes, no, we could probably do that.
So are we thinking the sixteenth or?
Yes. Okay.
We're for sure the sixteenth or you're gonna get back to us?
Let's set it up for the sixteenth and then I'll cancel it if, if, if we need to.
As far as the resolutions that you're talking about as far as the CRES and.
Yes.
And the water, the bomb.
Unless the, and if the bond salesman would happen to want to come that night, then we wouldn't do the LLC essential things.
Tuesdays are a really bad day for me. So, but I'm willing to give up.
Okay.
I can do that. It's just Tuesdays are just bad days.
Well, and that's a day after, you know, President's Day, so.
All right. So we're done. How about, now documents, this is only my second time going through this thing. Document signatures are done at the end?
A lot of times if we approve a resolution or ordinance while the rest of the meeting goes on, you just, we just pass them along. You guys can sign them while you're here. Sometimes if there was lots of them, we would wait till we adjourned and then, but.
Okay, since we didn't do anything, we have zero signatures. Okay, police report seems to be the next thing in my packet.
So everybody should have received a copy of the police report. Have you noticed it's a one column? Cause we finished up the year. Again, I want to remind everybody that this is an unaudited report, so those numbers can and do change. As you can see on the citations, my guess is a lot of those citations were issued last month. But are. Probably in December and January and they got added into this month. So at, at the end of the year, they'll, they will equal out. So. Are there any questions about the report?
I have two.
Sir.
Can you divulge if your felony reports and arrests are drug related?
Okay. I, I.
You can, you can't.
Well, I, I, I can say that. A lot of the times. There's usually drugs related in arrests. So to say yes and no, that may not been the, the priority charge, but they tend to turn into another charge. So.
My second question. The unclassified reports, there's sixteen of them. What does that entail or what is the meaning of unclassified report?
So as you can imagine, we have a law library of, I don't know how many books in Oregon law. So we have all kinds of different crimes. I can't list each, well, I could, but your report would probably be ten pages long. If I was to list all the crimes. So what we did is we kind of condensed what the council was looking for, what, you know, in that area. These unclassified could be. I'd say a, a, a husband and wife divorce, they have a child custody parenting plan. We may get called to be there to watch as the transfer takes place. That's an unclassified report. It's not a crime. A lot of civil cases follow the unclassified report. So it's, it's what doesn't normally fit into the normal burglaries, robberies. DUIs, that type of thing.
Thank you, TV.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So it says seven thousand in reports, but only three thousand arrests.
Correct. So we, we. Investigate multiple crimes all throughout the month. Some of them are felony crimes, but they may not have been prosecuted yet or the person hasn't been arrested yet. So. It still counts as a felony, but they just haven't been formally charged. So that they don't, they don't, until they get actually in custody, it doesn't go on to the arrest. Same with misdemeanors. The one thing that, that we had to put in here, when we switched from our old reporting program. Ten, that was here ten years ago to our new one, you can see under total officer reports, CIS conversion. You'll, you'll probably see zero there forever now because when we switched, we had to have that column in there because we had to convert. Files from an old program to the new program. And so that's why that's there. But. I, I could remove it from the report, but I have to pay to customize the report. I don't see a reason to, to pay to have something taken out that really doesn't matter. So.
I have another question too. What's the acronym OIA?
Officer involved or officer initiated activity. So typically they, they go out and find a crime, not, not you calling nine one one. They'll, they'll, they'll be driving around and see something that they take action on. Anybody else? Okay, I, I, I do want to touch on, and, and some of you may have heard, I know that Karen has received information. We have had some calls in reference to a loud. Noise that sounds like gunfire happening during the day and the night. That is a bird control cannon that is, it's a propane cannon that. Sets off a, a small explosion inside the cannon to scare off the birds. This, that is, that has been going on for several months at Lamb Weston. They have quite a bit of a bird problem and they have to mitigate that, obviously. But we have been getting complaints about it. And so. It is in an industrial area. It's kind of touchy. Yes, it's in the city limits. So we're trying to work with Lamb Weston and the people complaining to come to some kind of resolve. Obviously. They find it concerning and Lamb Weston wants to be a good partner. So they're, they're trying to work on it. Today they found out that somebody had actually turned the cannon. So instead of facing away from city limits, it's actually facing forward. And so they think maybe that's why it's so much louder and everybody's hearing it.
So complaints are happening during the daytime? Oh, nice.
Well, yeah. I, you know.
Is there a timeframe that this business is shooting them off or is it random?
It's on a timer. I don't have the exact time as to when it goes off. But, but.
How long has it been in place?
I, I didn't know this happening at all, but I was told it's been going on for several months now. So. Only recently did we start getting calls.
Would it be? Safe to say that maybe this is, we have a curfew, a noise time, right? A sleep time. I mean, pretty much like construction can only work during certain times due to noise for sleep. I mean, obviously if you work a twenty-four hour shift, that's gonna be, but it's really hard to complain about that. Cause you're sleeping. During, you know, noise time. Somebody shooting a chainsaw outside your door and you're trying to sleep would be pretty irritating. Cause I've been there, done that one. But I was just.
I, I, I agree. I, I, we, we probably could push that if, if you want to get into the. Business of, of issuing citations to. Them for the loud noise. I, 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 I prefer to work through it.
Yeah, I'm not, no way saying citation, but I mean, obviously conversations with, to find out what time to shoot, what time, the best time to do it. Obviously, if the bird or eagle dies.
I, I, I would use as an analogy, and I know it's not very good because I'm not trying to defend either or. But I, I, we have to recognize that we do have people that do work, shift work. So they all, their day is our night, our, our night's their day. So we gotta, we gotta recognize that as well. But I would also say we have a train that goes through here. It makes a lot of noise. I hear that on a regular basis. Are we gonna say, well, you.
From your house?
Yeah.
One year train from my house.
So are we gonna say, yeah, it's coming through the city limits to, you know. I, I just want to say that we need to be cognizant. I, so far from the, the people I talked to. I think Karen, did you get the opinion that they, they would prefer we just figure out how to get this taken care of and?
Oh, yes, yes. And they were more concerned with the nighttime.
That kind of seems my concern is the nighttime issue of working with this business or the businesses. To be able to come to somewhat of an agreement.
Are they going to test the theory that if they turn the cannon the other way, cause the noise will?
They did turn it. And he was going to, they were gonna try to work on some different avenues to see if maybe they can turn down how random it goes off. Because I'm sure it's on a timer to go off every hour or every thirty minutes. I don't know. And it seems like it is louder than what it was normally before. Again, I have never heard it, so I don't know.
I haven't noticed it, I guess. I mean, I'm sure I heard it, but I just maybe didn't notice what it was.
I think I've heard it. I just assumed it was something happening over in the construction by my house that.
I, I mean, it could, I could have been thinking it was bird hunters.
Well, I've been thinking that somebody was letting on fire there.
Well, we have that too.
Well, okay. So then, yeah, I just went on with my life.
We do have that on occasion. People celebrate birthdays or holidays or whatever. So we get them called all the time and usually it's fireworks. So. But we just wanted to make you aware that we're trying to find a resolution to work with that organization. And they, they, they want to be a good partner as well. So they're trying, they just have federal regulations that they have to abide by. So they're trying, they just have federal regulations that they have to abide by as well.
Correct.
Is something like this what we could do down in the arena? Talking about the geese and the gooses?
We have done, we have had that, that whole thing can before at the arena. And it, I don't believe we, it turns it on at night, but they get used to it immediately.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's good for maybe three days if you're lucky and then, yeah.
That's a good butt shot in it.
That solves some of the hunger problems we have.
So lastly, as far as police department goes, I think, if I haven't told you, we've had a couple officers that had light duty injuries. So one of my officers returned back to work from light duty. What I will tell you is this has been a trying time for all of us, I understand. But we've been down at one point three, almost four officers, and we still provide 24/7 coverage. That means all my guys are picking up extra stuff and, and in addition to dealing with COVID, they're starting to feel the stress. Especially that and the fact that we're not, we're public enemy number one in a lot of people's lives. So all that entails a long year for them as well. This year, I can tell you that the bills that are on the legislators' tables are extensive. A lot of them talk about qualified immunity. I can tell you that I would strongly urge, if you want to continue to keep good qualified police officers, you reach out to your representatives and explain to them the problem with removing qualified immunity. You won't have any officers that are going to stay. I can tell you, my entire agency right now, if you, if you take away qualified immunity, every one of us is going to walk away. It's just not worth it for us to stay. And if you don't know what qualified immunity is, it is where the courts have ruled that if you act in good faith by following state and federal law and you don't do so unethically, that you can be protected by the state. The state attorney can protect you in a civil lawsuit. If you remove qualified immunity, what that says is you as an officer has to pay for your own attorney and you can be sued in civil court. Well, and I use as an example, many years ago, I arrested a guy when I was in Idaho for DUI. I booked him into the computer system, I asked his name, date of birth, put all that information in the computer. Five years after that, I got served a civil lawsuit for copyright violation because I used his name on that booking document and he had his name copyrighted. Now, I know that sounds crazy, but the state of Idaho had to pay an attorney to represent me through those, and then the court finally dismissed it. But if I had to pay for that every time I stopped somebody, why would I stay in this career? You know? So there's a big push to remove qualified immunity. You already have it, the Supreme Court ruled on it forty years ago. We can't go down this ugly road. And my concern is when they do that kind of stuff, you're, the officers that you're going to find to replace those officers are probably not going to be the highest quality people. And you're going to have a lot more issues than what you're facing today. So watch those legislative bills. If you have any questions about them, let me know. As we break them down and they're real detrimental, I will be reaching out to you and saying, hey, I need some help. I want to be able to keep a good police department in a safe community, so. That's about all I've been saying, carrying on now. Thank you, if anybody has any questions.
You're welcome, thank you. Please let your officers know that as elected governing body, we appreciate each and every day they show up to work to protect ourselves, our families and our interests.
I will do.
We appreciate it.
You have our support a hundred percent.
And I'm more than happy to convey that message, but it would be, it's one thing coming from the chief, but it's another coming from you. So if you happen to see him, whatever you feel good enough to do, I think that would be helpful. They're good guys, they take care of everyone. To me, they're all my people.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Glenn?
I have just one comment to make. If you anticipate being out of town for two or three days, be sure you carry a key to open your doors. Because if you ask the police department to keep an eye on your property, you'll come home and find all your doors locked.
There's a reason.
From experience.
Thank you very much, Chief. But it was real easy to break into the back door. But now.
We don't need to know that.
I will find, I will find a key to my, to at least one door in my house.
Just remember, a lock keeps an honest man honest. If they really want in, they're going to get in. But welcome back, Ed.
Good to see you. It's been six, seventeen years since I was with Ed Glenn, so. I enjoy, thank you for being on, I appreciate it. Building Department report. Do we have anybody from the Building Department?
I don't, he's not on tonight.
I don't see. So.
And so it's pretty, it's pretty easy for you to. I said, I don't, Jackie's on, but I don't know if she was going to, I think she's just listening.
Because he's had some permits on this piece of paper here.
You can see that there's fifty-one, they sold fifty-one permits and you can.
Only one new house.
Yeah, which is great.
Yeah, because that's, it is, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of years, we sold no new houses, so one new house is, and.
In each, in each category.
Yes, and one new house in here again and in the county. So that's.
And the permits, is that for like to start building a business?
Well, it could be electrical.
Oh, I guess it could just be a home repair or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It could be plumbing or mechanical or building.
Oh, that's good.
But I, we're just trying to give you more reports from each department so that you kind of have a feel for that. So the next one, I ask Public Works for them to start making a report.
I appreciate you.
Yes, I do too.
Thank you.
All right, Public Works, you're up.
Well, that's me. I'm up for now.
Public, you're Public Works? Oh, I expected somebody different, but you can work.
No, I think I'm it.
You're it?
She's all, she's Miss City.
Yeah. I just asked them to put in the report, so.
All right.
Anyway, you can read it for your information because, you know, I think it shows you like that where I'm busy doing locates, you see all these stripes in the street, you know, but and two new meters installed and nine hundred and forty-seven meters red. So that gives you kind of an idea of how many meters, because I think, oh, I don't know, maybe when I first came here, it was four hundred and eighty or something. You know, so yeah, we're growing. And this is how you kind of tell how, how much you're growing is when you see like meters red and those kind of things, you know? Every little check and balance kind of goes along.
So on this, if I'm reading this correctly, we have a day or a week or a month of street sweeping. The second item from the bottom?
Yes.
It doesn't say, one minute, five hours?
I think they don't, I think they sweep the streets when they have extra time.
Oh, okay.
You know, like maybe, you know.
So this is basically a job description of what they do.
Yeah, I'm not asking for foot hours at all. Because we just, well, I can't, I don't know how many, because we will go around, you know, pick up people's Christmas trees.
That is a luxury. I, living in different homes, that doesn't happen in other places.
No.
That's true, very true, very true.
And if we had an organization, you know, like the Boy Scouts or some organization that was doing that, you know, we would be happy to, you know, yeah, not do it or encourage people to use them. But when there's appears to be no one, then it's a nice service so that you can be rid of yours and. Yeah, so anyway, I want, I asked them and so they'll start trying to put in a, some kind of report for you or whatever.
Good, I like it, thank you. The next thing we have is the SDC chart that we were talking about on Saturday, was in the report here. Was this put together by Barry?
No, Heather did this.
Heather did that, okay.
And I haven't had a chance to ask Barry if he has even looked at it. I, I know that I didn't check the figures yet. And so, well, you don't have to hold it up, we all have it. What I, what, what we need to figure out is somebody's gonna have to unmute him, I don't know whether it's him or you.
I've reviewed it. I haven't gone through and checked the calculations.
You haven't either?
Not yet.
Okay.
This kind of gives us an outline of what we talked about on Saturday, of what we were thinking about, how we were going to try to raise some revenue and increase some costs of our SDCs. And they did exactly what we asked them to do, to come up with our current plan, ninety percent and a maximum level. I think this, the.
What's the red number? What does that indicate on each box? The total?
That's the, that'd be the total SDC that's paid. Or what the total for both water and sewer for either four or three units would be.
So this is, this is what the contractor pays for the city? Or is that what is way?
No, the green numbers is what the con, the developer or the contractor would pay.
And so if I'm reading this correctly.
Red numbers are.
At ninety percent maximum level, the contractor is given, getting basically a gift of eleven thousand, six hundred. And he doesn't have to pay anything or tier one.
Yes, the first three.
Okay.
Because before, now, see, if you go to the far left, now he's, we were talking about raising the rate, but we give him four for free. If you're to the.
Right, the current time. Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Right, so.
This was something that was asked for us to have. It was going to be discussed that we probably take action on it in March. So the council needs to make sure they take a look at this. If there's tweaks or things like that, we probably need to share those ideas and, because we're going to take action on it in March.
Well, and if you see things or if you have a preference, yeah, you might email us here at City Hall so that we can be prepared for a better conversation.
Absolutely. Because it's a resolution will need to be, or we just change, the resolution, maybe we're just going to change a couple of numbers in it and some dates and things like that. Does the language stay the same from year to year?
Well, it'll be a different. I think it'll be a different resolution just because of you're going to change from four to three in the amount, but it's going to be basically.
I guess what I'm saying is we need to pretty much have a good idea because you're going to come up with a resolution.
Right.
That night.
Before that night.
Before that night to be able to blow it off.
Yes.
So. Does that mean you're going to have three resolutions written on depending on which one we accept?
We could do, we can do that.
I'm just thinking what might be the easiest for the staff.
Well, let, give us some time to think about that.
Okay.
Because we haven't, since we talked about it on Saturday.
It's only like two days.
And how we.
I'm happy to see it, I mean, I, I figured it would be here.
Whoever did this, my accolades to them.
Yeah.
So, all right, we'll move on to that and, but I just wanted to share that with the ones who are absent on Saturday.
May, may, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we have a, if we have a meeting on the sixteenth, if you, if council couldn't look that over and, and the staff report that was, it was in your packet as well. And that way we could get direction as to what you want in the resolution and have it for you at the March meeting.
That's actually a really good idea. So I think, I think we should be able to have a good idea of what we, our opinions are, that we could give information on to the staff on what to have for the March meeting. I think that would be fair.
And I think, so the next thing in your packet is, you know, we told you that we'd send out Barry's report that he had done several years back.
Two thousand and eight.
Yeah, several years. And, but the, the graphs that are attached to it are all the same. I mean, they don't change, so if you're, if you're wanting to consider a transportation SDC, if this is good information, if that way, like you say, you have had time to read this perhaps more thoroughly.
Well, it has some vehicles in there that have different methods of generating revenue.
Yes.
Some I would think would be a little more palatable to the citizenry versus others coming from like a DOT or other venues that we talked about on Saturday. So it is very informative and it has to be updated, you know, with some language to mirror our current history. So, yeah. That's my input on that.
Hey Barry, did you have anything to share as far as your report on, other than the SDCs that we just talked about?
Yes, there is, there is one of the items in those, in that staff report that is mentioned as a potential for funding source for transportation. And that's the gas tax. Because the city did not pursue a gas tax before the deadline, that's no longer something that the city can do. Only the cities that had gas taxes prior to the passage of whichever law it was, it's, that's now off the table, so.
Well, I think you mentioned that Saturday, did you, Barry?
Yes, and it's in red.
Yeah, I see that. My next question is, has the transient room tax ever been increased or is it the same from way back in?
It is five, still five percent.
After twenty years?
I don't know.
Because it got, it got put in when I was on the city council sixteen years ago, twenty years ago.
Yeah. And.
So, I mean, I'm just.
No, it's, we've never, you know, we give the chamber a hundred thousand a year, that commitment's there. And lodging taxes is, you have to spend it on something touristy. I mean, it's not just for, you know, so sometimes if you get to splitting the hairs, we think that we could use some of it perhaps on a street or, you know, on the park or, I mean, there's things that the city could use if there's a surplus, so. And there's, you don't stay at any hotel, bottom line, that it's not ten or eleven percent.
That's why I brought it up, I'm not saying, I think it's something that needs to be addressed, whether, what happens to that, but I think the transient room tax is definitely a discussion that needs to, that once again happen.
Well, and, okay, so I listened to an LLC. Well, and, okay, so, I listened to an LOC webinar the other day, because the state wants to start take over collecting your, your room tax. And I'm thinking, fat chance. But when I listened to it, I, I never thought about like on the coast, where you've got all these people renting out their own homes and stuff, and you've got all this bread and breakfast, and Airbnb and that kind of thing. It's not just like they're boardmen, we've got a lodging, and you know people go stay there, like in Marina Park, you stay there, you know, so, we don't have all that extra thing. And also, you guys are all new. I was shocked when I found out that there are communities on the coast that have no tax base. They generate all their income off of the lodging tax. And so this last year has been really detrimental to them. I mean, some of those towns are really crying, because they just are not receiving the tourist dollars that they've always been accustomed to, and you're just thinking, really, no tax? I mean, I mean, it's probably great to live there, you know, only thinking of the property tax you pay, but, yeah, so. Personally, when, they're, I think they're going to try to write a bill or convince us something that we should, we don't have to do that, we don't have to allow them, but they're saying that it's, well, it's, it's just like that marijuana tax. You know, we'll collect it for you, and then we'll take our cut and send it back to you, so. I think that we've, we've got a pretty good system we figured out here.
Okay, anything else, Barry? All right, thanks, buddy, I read your list.
No, your honor.
All right, um, we're back to the city manager, you get to speak again, you got anything else? Not that it's a bad thing, I, I.
No, I, I think I did all my talking on, on Saturday.
So, if you were gone Saturday, then you're blessed.
I did, I did. And, well, the only other thing I would mention is that the, uh, Transportation Department, NEAC, is having a workshop. They have one today, they're, they're going to have another one on Thursday. And, you know, trying to decide some of their long-range plan, because ODAB is, they're like every agency, you know, they, some of their funding is changing profits, and so they're trying to figure out what to do, because there's a lot more money in, like a bus, if I wanted to run a bus, like public transportation. And if anybody wants to be on a committee, they're always looking for people here in Laurel County to be on the, the, what we call the loop, and it's about public transportation, you know. Yeah, so it would be if anybody wants, or if they have time to drive. I mean, if you know somebody that's retired and wouldn't mind driving people to doctor's appointments and different things like that, it.
It's volunteer, right?
I think you get paid $25 a day, a trip.
That $25 a trip?
Well, well, that's, no, well.
So, they're trying to do a little compensation?
Yes, they do a little compensation, but it's going to turn into a real job, but, but for too much longer, because in part of today's presentation, and I know that the, you know, you see the Kaius.
That's us, yes.
Bus thing.
For the, for the, for the casino.
They're wanting, they're, they're going, they're making a, I guess it would be a bid to come into as far as boardmen, and then we worked, we worked on a thing a while, like before COVID, so it'd be last year, about a route that would take in all of, you know, go from one plant down around and go into Homestead and back again, trying to get all those scheduled, so, if you have opinions about those kind of things, it'd be great to share, so.
Anything else?
I can't think of a thing.
Can't think of a thing? The City Digital Reader Board will be installed tomorrow, just sharing this update, thank you for allowing you to share.
Tori.
Oh, did I not say Tori? It's from Tori, so she's sharing that the Digital Reader Board will be installed tomorrow.
Is that the one out by the?
That's going to be out towards the city center.
The Napa store, no.
That's the Napa store? Oh, City Digital, the Napa store?
Yes.
It helps if she tells me, so I can tell you.
Yeah, she should have put that in her little note there.
Right, because I called him, and he didn't return my call.
I just got an email from him about 7 o'clock tonight.
Says it's coming tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh, good. Because it's, there's been a lot of times, like this last week, when we wanted to say that people, you know, that they had canceled the COVID vaccinations here and then Hep and stuff. You know, I mean, it'd have been great to have that reader board up, so I am happy he's coming, good.
Well, good, I'm excited, that's great news.
Look at there, 9 o'clock, see y'all, good time.
Uh, councilors, you got anything that you would like to share on the last piece of, of our agenda here?
I would like to take this opportunity to pass on to Karen, to pass on to Heather. Thank you for all her work this week, she was under the gun, and she got the numerous documents in short order. I truly appreciate that.
I, I will pass that on.
Anybody else have something to say?
I have, I have a que, I have a question.
Okay, Junior, go ahead.
So, I have a question on the cities or the chamber, whoever's doing the disc golf. And I see there's, I drive by it every day, I see people playing on it, which makes me happy. They're working on it, it's looking good. I'm just curious if there's somewhere on the chamber or the boardman's site that you can go to to get information of how it's set up, or what the, what the hole locations are, what the pars are, or any of that?
You want me to give that update?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, you can use an app called UDisc, and on the app, it has a map and the distances of all the holes. We are in the middle of working with Dynamic Disc out of Kansas to design a map, and each hole will have a, a sign that gives you distance and the, um, what the course line looks like and how to get to the next one. Those are in production right now, we mainly wanted to get it open, and then we will be sharing, we'll be creating some kind of information board that will be down there by the parking lot at Silbord Beach for the disc golf.
Okay, thank you, and so I had an, an idea, if you have a website, like a UDisc, can you make it so it's a printable, a printable paper to go by?
Yes, we're working on that as well, and trying to find something for those people who don't have the UDisc app and just want to pick it up and play, we're working on some of that as well to have down there at the park and rec office, where you check in for the campers, they're going to share, they're going to hold some information there as well, because it, that way it won't get wet, and we don't have to continue to restock it, they'll just keep those on hand.
So, so that kind of goes with what I, is there a way to put it on the boardman or the chamber site where you can actually print it, so you don't have to go down there, and then you're not having the expenditure of the paper on the city or the chamber, the people who just print them at home?
Yes, and so we're going to be doing that underneath the BCDA tab on the Boardman Chamber page. We're going to create any of these projects that require more information on it, you will be able to have a direct link under BCDA projects, so that is a page in development right now.
Perfect, thank you, that sounds like a great idea.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing that I would like to share is, I would like to thank the staff doing something that was dear to my heart, was the translation of the public notices. That was something that was very dear to me, and I appreciate the staff being willing to do that, and I just wanted to thank that, say that right now. This is something that hasn't been done, and I, I appreciate it. But as far as that, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting. And thank you for coming on and listening, and I hereby close this meeting. Go ahead, let's go.
So, so when it says breakout room down.